Welcome, everyone. Before we begin the meeting, we will have a prayer by Councilman Mahalovich and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. The bonds of June has many significant dates to remember, two of which is the passing of the Fourteenth Amendment, recognized on June 14th, and June 6th, the marking of beginning of D-Day. These two dates mark significant dates in the establishment and protection of freedom. So let us never forget the struggle, let us never forget the sweat and toil, let us never forget the loss of lives associated with the establishment and keeping of our freedom. God bless our citizens on our homeland and our servicemen who fought on distant shores to keep our freedom and to live in prayer. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the Monday, June 4th, 2018 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, is there a motion for adoption of agenda?
So moved.
And Councilman Hussey?
I would make that motion with the addition of item four, C., presentation of your proclamation for Gun Safety Awareness Day.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. Item A, we have a presentation of USS Jefferson City submarine photograph to Marty Thurston, USS Jefferson City submarine committee. So we would ask Marty to come forward and the other members of the USS Jefferson City submarine committee, and we would like to present this photograph to you, Marty.
I would also ask that our liaison come forward too, and that the entire council come back here so we can all get in the picture, so...
Okay, Marty and I are going to say a few words here before we take the picture. First of all, this was a surprise to Marty, so she did not realize she's going to be recognized tonight. And Marty, your service is something that is so special and important to all of us here in Jefferson City. All of the sailors on the USS Jefferson City submarine, when they come here, they say you're like a mom to them, and I know that you treat them as if they're your own son. Do you want to tell us a little bit about how long you've been doing this and what some of your favorite things are?
About fourteen years I've been doing this, but I've been on this committee, I think, six, at least six. But I just like being with them. It's like having my own son home when they come. And just being around them, they're always so polite, so nice, and just show, and I'm proud to show them Jeff City because I'm so proud of our city, and they're just a neat group to be around, so...
We are very fortunate to have your service to the community in doing this, and when they come here on their trips, which we're very fortunate when they come every year, you are with them from the minute they arrive, and taking them back when they leave, and every minute in between, and really showcasing Jefferson City to them. So we're very proud to present this to you, and we know that you can't do it by yourself. You do have a committee, and we have some committee members here, and we appreciate them being here as well. And also, our council liaison to the committee, Mr. David, Councilman David Kimna. So on behalf of the City of Jefferson, it's our honor to present this photograph to you, and we will get a picture of all of us up here with it, so...
That's so cool.
She's like, "Here you go, sigh." Taking it back.
Stand up, Carl.
Thank you, Marty. And for those of you that don't know, I would like to highlight that we have a case right outside here in City Hall that has memorabilia from the USS Jefferson City, and we have a banner that they brought us on their last visit when they were here a couple of months ago. And we really enjoy the connection that we have with our namesake submarines. So very, very fortunate to have all the work that they've done and all the years and years of dedication by Marty. So congratulations, and thank you again. Item two, we have a presentation of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award by Mr. Steve Kroll.
Thank you, and I will ask the Department Director to come up, Margie Miller, Director of Finance and Information Technology. And I will let Margie introduce her staff that is here.
Our chief accountant, Sheila Perry, is here. And Kara Sankey, who is our senior accountant, who is also very instrumental in putting these budget documents together for the award, couldn't make it this evening.
So I am pleased to announce that the City of Jefferson has received the Governmental Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for fiscal year 2017-18 budget, which is our current budget. This is a significant accomplishment. I want to thank the Mayor and City Council for your commitment to ensuring a high level of information for our citizens to better appreciate and understand the finances of the city. I want to congratulate Director of Finance and Information Technology, Margie Miller, and all the staff members, and lead personnel, whom Margie introduced, and all the department directors and employees for their hard work preparing the necessary information for this distinguished award. In order to receive the award, the city had to satisfy some nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation, as assessed by a team of independent assessors. These guidelines are designated to assess how well, designated to assess how well an entity's budget serves as, one, a policy document, a financial plan, an operational guide, and a communications device. Budget documents receiving this recognition must be rated proficient in all four categories in order to receive the award. There are twenty-seven budget award criteria, and GFOA, the Governmental Finance Officers Association, determined that the city's 2017-18 budget met the required guidelines. For the 2017 year, there were approximately sixteen-hundred organizations which received the Distinguished Budget Award, although there are approximately nineteen-thousand members of GFOA. So you can see that is a relatively small number of entities that are able to accomplish this significant achievement. We also received recognition for our popular financial report, and also our CAFER, our Audit, our Certified Financial Report. So with that, I will make this presentation. It was by the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, presented to the City of Jefferson, Missouri, for the fiscal year beginning November 1st, 2017. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mrs. Miller, and to the entire finance department. And if you all would like to come forward, we are going to get a picture with the award. I will say that the award, although we are fortunate to receive it often, that it is not a given, and it takes a lot of hard work, like Steve mentioned, so we appreciate all that you do to keep us at this level. So we will have the council come back here to get in this photograph as well.
Rick, you better keep it up. Come on, Ricky.
Ma'am, why are you in the back? Look, Richie, come on up here.
How are we supposed to stand? We don't know what to do. I feel a little bad.
All right. Item C, we have Moms Demand Action Group here, and if, I know there's several of them here, I can tell by their red shirts. So if you would all like to come forward to the podium, I will present this proclamation for Gun Safety Awareness Day. And originally, the intent was to present this at Kids Fest, and Councilman Hussey had agreed to present this for me, and Councilman Hussey has two young daughters, and I know with the rain, Kids Fest was rained out, but do you want to say a couple of words about that?
Well, I just appreciate your efforts, and bummed that Kids Fest was canceled and we missed the chance to sort of proclaim it and have the attention of that day, but appreciate you all coming here this evening so that Mayor Turgeon gets a chance to present the proclamation officially.
Great, and at this time, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas promoting public safety in our community is one of Jefferson City's public officials' highest responsibilities, and whereas the City of Jefferson is committed to promoting citizen's safety, and whereas through partnership and collaboration between the community and local agencies, we can strive to increase public awareness on gun safety issues and focus on ways to reduce crime and improve quality of life, and whereas the City of Jefferson supports responsible gun ownership and stands with the Americans across the country, and whereas June 1st, 2018 marked the Fourth Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day, citizens are encouraged to, or orange, on June 1st to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor those affected. Therefore, I, Kerry Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, proclaim June 2nd as Gun Safety Awareness Day. And I know at Kids Fest, you had planned to work with our county sheriff's department and use different methods of education to promote some gun safety for families. So do you want to say a few words at the podium? And if you speak into the mic there?
Mayor Turgeon, I want to thank you for the leadership that you've shown in declaring June 2nd Gun Safety Awareness Day. It's really important that you've done this. Currently, gun deaths represent the third-leading cause of deaths among children, and they're, the American Academy of Pediatrics estimates that there's 1.7 million households with children that have unsecured guns in the homes. So we have a Be Smart Safety Program that works with the adults in the homes to try to get them to secure their guns and model safe behavior with respect to guns. And Sheriff Wheeler provided us with the gun locks, so we're going to work hard, even though Kids Fest was canceled, to try to get those gun locks in the hands of our families to protect our kids. So thank you for showing the leadership, and we look forward to working with you in the future. And if anybody knows of any groups that they're a part of that would appreciate a gun safety program, we are happy to provide our service. So I wanted to send this little pamphlet around and...
We'll pass it around.
Take one if you...
Thank you.
Well, and we will get a picture. Councilman Hussey will come down, since he was going to originally present this to you, and I know his daughters would have enjoyed being part of that. And again, this group is a nonpartisan group, and it's something that's just really promoting safety for children, and so appreciate you working with the county sheriff's department as well. So we'll come down, Ken and I, and you all can come forward, and we'll get a picture together.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Got it.
Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Item five, public hearings, there are none. Item six, appointments by the mayor, we don't have any this evening. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. Item A, community park update by Mr. Todd Spalding.
Thank you all. I'm excited today to present to you the latest plans of a community park and answer any questions that you all might have. As you know, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, we set off on a master plan process, something that we haven't done here since the 50s for parks. And so one of the things that certainly came out of, especially the early data, we really wanted to focus this on what the community needs were and what the data showed us. One of the first needs that became very apparent early in the process and confirmed later in the process was the need for improvements at community park. And as I said, master, quite a bit on data, one of the things that I want to share with you, I think that is one of the most powerful pieces from this process, in a one-mile radius of community park, there are eleven thousand people that can walk to that, that can get to that park within a mile. And that was a park that hasn't been improved, hasn't made much of any kind of improvements for many, many years. In fact, the latest that I got was in 1985, a committee was formed to provide restrooms for that park, which was not done currently. So we wanted to take, we felt like, the commission felt like, they charged me with, like, let's get this going. Even before we do anything else on the master plan, we know this is a need. Where it's located, in such a prominent spot, the history of the area, we wanted to move forward and get this done. The plan that you see really changes what that will look like, and on a plan, it looks good, I hope, but when you go to, when we go to the next slide here in a minute, you'll see really what it's going to look like as you come in. But what we have, oh, and backing up, one of the first groups that I met with when I first got here two and a half years ago was the Community Arts Foundation. They wanted to raise money because they wanted to provide and help provide a splash park in our community, which we didn't have yet. And we felt like this would be the ideal location as well as they did. They actually have raised, in that time, about sixty thousand dollars to go towards us, so it was a great partnership with them as well. We also received a grant from the Recreational Trails Program to provide what's called kind of a, you know, it's right on our trails, so we're also going to have kind of a little rest station there too, with water fountains and stuff, for folks that are walking, riding bikes, that can be there. We received about a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of a grant there. But as you can see, what we have there is going to be a park, it's going to be a destination park. We've worked with the Eastside Community Association that owns the little building there. In fact, they own quite a bit of that property that you see towards Dunkland. A lot of folks maybe didn't know that, they thought that might have been Parkland, but that's actually owned by the non-for-profit group. We've worked with them to acquire some property so that we can provide parking, not only for the park, but also for them, so we've created, I feel like, a good partnership there. And like I said, this is going to be a destination park. This is going to have a splash park, it's going to have two shelters, it's going to have a restroom facility, it's going to have play structures for all age groups and all ability groups. And it's going to have one of the key features in there, and we'll see that on the next slide here in a minute too. One of the key features in the park is going to be a kind of a pyramid-shaped play structure that goes up into the air about twenty-five feet with a slide coming down. So you're going to be, it's going to be a, not only something really neat to look at, but it's going to be a thing that families, and especially kids, are going to remember. And this is a place that they're going to want to go. So if you go on to the next slide, if you don't mind, that shows some of the features then in a little more detail, and what kind of slides it will be, what kind of swings will be there, what kind of, potentially what the splash park will look like. And again, the splash park is not going to be a large area, but it's a pretty good size, but it's going to be a place where you can go and have water fun that's not going to cost the user any dollars. It's a free thing, you go, you hit buttons, it starts whatever spray feature they want to do, and so it's a real nice feature, it's fun, it's free, and kids love it. So that are, those are the features there. If we go to the third slide, this will show what the park will look like as you come in from the cul-de-sac. So you can see access, you can see lighting, you can see benches. This is going to be a wonderful place, but it's just going to, it's going to look nice, it's going to be well-lit, it's going to be lots of places for people to sit. Inside the shelters, there's going to be game areas, so the tables will be combination, just tables, and also places to play board games and have built-in checkers and chess boards. There'll also be other types of family games within those things as well. So again, this is kind of where we're at in the process. Currently, we have money in our fund balance to fund this. Now, the commission will, is moving towards potentially presenting an idea, an option to actually think about special obligation bonds to do more projects, but we know we have the money for this, we know we want to do this, we know this is a community need. So we're moving forward with that now. The construction documents are being drawn now. If you remember, about a month ago, there was a supplemental appropriation to pay for the design and construction drawings for that, so we hope to have those back within the next forty-five days or so, so we can bid that out for the project to begin, hopefully, sometime in late summer or fall. I think that's all I wanted to cover to start with, but again, I think it's important to note, as parks, as we look at the Parks Master Plan, one of the things from a park perspective, to be the very best community that we can be, we need parks that, that basically, we have lots of parks, and we want to be able to kind of put that one-mile radius, or that ten-minute walk, basically, around that park and be able to touch each part of our community. Everyone deserves and needs parks, lower-income, higher-income, everyone. And so this is an area where we felt like was the greatest need right away, that we needed to do something with right now. So that's where we're at. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or talk about anything.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding.
Yes.
Are there any questions? Councilman Schreiber?
Mr. Spalding?
Yes.
You mentioned the eleven thousand residents that live within a one-mile radius of community park. How does that compare density-wise with the population in other areas where there's parks within the city limits?
I can't, I can send you out the numbers, but I can tell you it's considerably more than any of our other parks. I think if I remember, at least double of any other parks.
Does that eleven thousand plus also include, I guess that would include the McClung Park area as well?
It does touch on McClung, right on the edge, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Councilman Graham?
Yes, Todd, thank you for this presentation.
You bet.
I think this is something that's very much needed. This is a long conversation, a long talk, because I remember people talking about trying to get a bathroom for this park, and now we have something like this that can be put in that area. Says a lot. And for this to be able to touch eleven thousand people within a one-mile distance also says a lot. So I just want to say kudos to you and the commission, and the architect that helped to design this, and certainly, I look forward to seeing this come to fruition. So I just want to say thank you for bringing this to where we're at right now.
You're welcome.
Great comments, and agree, this is a wonderful project. And I know you mentioned that there's the fundraising being done for the piece about the splash park, and I believe coming up in July, is it? Have they set the date yet for the next ice cream splash event?
I think they have, I can't recall the date, but I believe they have, yes.
Great. When that gets closer, if you want to make another announcement, maybe at the council meeting prior to that, so we can make sure that we get that out to the public and the other council members, that would be great.
They've been a great partner to work with, they've wanted to bring this in. I know they've been working on it for, I think, over four years for this.
Yes, they keep holding the annual fundraisers and events, and it's great to see that partnering with this and having the local dollars and local fundraising matching some of that as well. Any further council comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Spalding.
You're welcome.
All right. Item eight, we have announcements...
And like I said, this is going to be a destination park. This is going to have a splash park, it's going to have two shelters, it's going to have a restroom facility, it's going to have play structures for all age groups and all ability groups. And it's going to have one of the key features in there, and we'll see that on the next slide here in a minute too. One of the key features in the park is going to be a kind of a pyramid-shaped play structure that goes up into the air about 25 feet with a slide coming down. So, you're going to be, it's going to be a, not only something really neat to look at, but it's going to be a thing that families and especially kids are going to remember. And this is a place that they're going to want to go. So, if you go on to the next slide, if you don't mind, that shows some of the features then in a little more detail on what kind of slides it will be, what kind of swings will be there, what kind of, potentially what the splash park will look like. And again, the splash park is not going to be a large area, but it's a pretty good size, but it's going to be a place where you can go and have water fun that's not going to cost the user any dollars. It's a free thing, you go, you hit buttons, it starts whatever spray feature they want to do, and so it's a real nice feature. It's fun, it's free, and kids love it. So, that are, those are the features there. If we go to the third slide, this will show what the park will look like as you come in from the cul-de-sac. So, you can see access, you can see lighting, you can see benches. This is going to be a wonderful place, but it's just going to, it's going to look nice. It's going to be well-lit, it's going to be lots of places for people to sit. Inside the shelters, there's going to be game areas, so the tables will be combination, just tables, and also places to play board games and have built-in checkers and chess boards. There'll also be other types of family games within those things as well. So, again, this is kind of where we're at in the process. Currently, we have money in our fund balance to fund this. Now, the commission will, is moving towards potentially presenting an idea, an option to actually think about special obligation bonds to do more projects. But we know we have the money for this, we know we want to do this, we know this is a community need, so we're moving forward with that now. The construction documents are being drawn now. If you remember, about a month ago, there was a supplemental appropriation to pay for the design and construction drawings for that, so we hope to have those back within the next 45 days or so, so we can bid that out for the project to begin hopefully sometime in late summer or fall. I think that's all I wanted to cover to start with, but again, I think it's important to note, as parks, as we look at the parks' master plan, one of the things from a park perspective, to be the very best community that we can be, we need parks that, that basically, we have lots of parks, and we want to be able to kind of put that one-mile radius or that 10-minute walk basically around that park and be able to touch each part of our community. Everyone deserves and needs parks, lower-income, higher-income, everyone. And so, this is an area where we felt like was the greatest need right away, that we needed to do something with right now. So, that's where we're at. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions or talk about anything.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding.
Yes.
Are there any questions? Councilman Schreiber?
Mr. Spalding?
Yes.
You mentioned the 11,000 residents that live within a one-mile radius of community park.
Mm-hmm.
How does that compare density-wise with the population in other areas where there's parks within the city limits?
I can't, I can send you out the numbers, but I can tell you, it's considerably more than any of our other parks. I think if I remember, at least double of any other parks.
Does that 11,000-plus also include, I guess that would include the McClung Park area as well?
It does touch on McClung, right on the edge, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Councilman Graham?
Yes, Todd, thank you for this presentation.
You bet.
I think this is something that's very much needed. This is a long conversation, a long talk, because I remember people talking about trying to get a bathroom for this park. And now, we have something like this that can be put in that area, says a lot. And for this to be able to touch 11,000 people within a one-mile distance also says a lot. So, I just want to say kudos to you and the commission and the architect that helped to design this, and certainly, I look forward to seeing this come to fruition. So, I just want to say thank you for bringing this to where we're at right now.
You're welcome.
Great comments, and agree, this is a wonderful project. And I know you mentioned that there's the fundraising being done for the piece about the splash park, and I believe coming up in July, is it? Have they set the date yet for the next ice cream splash event?
I think they have, I can't recall the date, but I believe they have, yes.
Great. When that gets closer, if you want to make another announcement, maybe at the council meeting prior to that, so we can make sure that we get that out to the public and the other council members, that would be great.
They've been a great partner to work with, they've wanted to bring this in. I know they've been working on it for, I think, over four years for this.
Yes, they keep holding the annual fundraisers and events, and it's great to see that partnering with this and having the local dollars and local fundraising matching some of that as well. Any further council comments or questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Spalding.
You're welcome.
All right. Item eight, we have announcements by mayor, council, and staff. I'll begin with my announcements. We had the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament last week, and that was a big success. Mayor Landwehr started that 13 years ago, and Mayor Strumpf was there, so we had all three mayors there, that was great. We also had Councilman Fitzwater and Councilman Kimna played in the tournament along with Mrs. Miller, and we had other city departments there as well. I don't know if I'm missing anyone else in the room now that, oh, and Spalding, Mr. Spalding played as well. So, of course, we were highlighting Oak Hills Golf Course, so that was very fitting. Wonderful city golf course there, appreciate that. So, thank you to all who supported, that was all done for Kiwanis, so appreciate all the support and everyone else who couldn't be there but stopped by or gave money and funds to that as well, we appreciate that. My big announcement is, of course, Salute to America, and if you want to learn what's going on, this Friday at the Chamber Coffee at 7:30 a.m., there will be, at the Chamber of Commerce Building, there's going to be a meeting that's going to explain all the changes taking place with the Capitol construction, so I encourage council members and the public to come, so that's this Friday, June 8th, at 7:30 a.m. at the Chamber Coffee to learn about all the logistics and changes and events that are taking place with Salute to America on July 4th. And of course, on the Saturday prior to July 4th now, for the third year in a row, we've had a concert inside the walls at the Missouri State Penitentiary, and you know that every year, or every meeting, I have you all sing a little bit. So, I hope that you all are practicing, especially our newest council member, John Hensley over here. But I can give you a little rundown about that, so I think we may have a brief video that I'll draw your attention to. Oh, we don't have sound, but maybe that's a good thing. There it is. City Hall, yeah, this is what happens on a typical day at City Hall. Running out of the mayor's office. (Music) 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 And could not do it without our sponsors that are shown there. So, that music video, I always wanted to be in a music video. So, anyway, there it is. So, it is online on Facebook and everything, so, but yeah, go to salutetoamerica.org to get your tickets and practice your songs, although you all are doing great. So, that was Angela Nail, and we appreciate all the volunteers that really come together to make Salute to America happen. And Angela's the festival chair, and I'm the foundation chair. And Salute to America, we alternate back and forth between the city and county every year, so usually, it's the county chairs, and this year, I'm chairing it. So, I don't know if you would have wanted to see Sam Bushman doing that video, so probably it worked out good that it was, you can tell him I said that. Anyway, and Angela's son was our 21-year-old, John Rich, in that video, I think he did a really fine job. And Jane Dunkman, who's also heavily involved in Salute to America, filmed our special video there. So, we hope that everybody joins us on Saturday night, June 30th, Inside the Walls, right? You're all coming? Inside the Walls? Yeah?
Yeah.
All right, and Jeff City Mo, Carlos is?
I'm by the riverside.
All right, Carlos, he's got it down. Is that right? Close enough, close enough. Now, after that, any other announcements? Can anyone top that, please? No. Any committee meetings coming up? No announcements? Nothing? Everybody's silent after that. Okay, no other announcements? All right. Item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative Update, Mrs. Carolyn Wanjaro.
There we go, sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few updates. Well, the new president is officially in office. Saw her earlier today. I didn't see you, Carlos, today.
I'm here.
I didn't, I didn't see you today, but usually, I see you almost every day. And also, summer session started last week on Tuesday, and we'd like to congratulate the Lincoln University's men and women's track team for their wonderful representation of Lincoln University in North Carolina last week, yes. The women's team are the 2018 outdoor champions, and we're really proud of them for that, and the men placed in third, came in third. And we just want them to know that we recognize their efforts on a daily basis, and that's about it.
Congratulations, we absolutely do. Very proud of them. Councilman Graham?
No, just, I know we will get a chance to recognize those young ladies for their outstanding accomplishments once again and bring in great recognition to the city of Jefferson. But it speaks volume because those young ladies actually won the Division II National Championship without having field events. So, that says a lot. I mean, when you just have just the runners and you actually win a championship, that says a lot. So, we'll get a chance to recognize those young ladies, but if they are listening, congratulations to you, so.
Absolutely, congratulations, we're very proud of them. And thank you for that report, Ms. Wanjaro.
No problem.
Item 10, we have no presentations from the gallery this evening. Item 11, the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Before we get to item 12, bills introduced, I have a prior commitment this evening, so I'm going to sneak out, and our mayor pro tem, Mr. Councilman Hussey, is going to take over the rest of the meeting, so don't have a record-fast meeting when I'm gone here, I know. But I have a, it's my sister's birthday, and I'm going to celebrate with her and spend a little time with family, so I appreciate everyone being understanding, and I'll turn it over to Councilman Hussey. Thank you, Kim. Great, thanks. Bye-bye.
I will not be singing.
Well, come on.
Thank you, Mayor, we're out of here in five minutes right now. All righty, we'll move on to bills introduced, 2018-017.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for surface transportation program funds.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This is a standard supplemental agreement, this is our third one with MoDOT. It basically is extending an existing contract, grant contract that we have with MoDOT through the end of May 2019. The reason for this is that we were kind of late getting our contractual process in place with our consultants, and they do need quite a bit of time to do the work, so it would go into next fiscal year. We actually plan to be done, not by May, but the earlier part of next year. The money is already in the current year's budget, and we will be rolling some of the money that pays for this into next year. The city's portion is only 15% of $150,000, and that's already in this year's budget and putting it in next year's budget, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to item B, Bill 2018-018.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with GBH Builders Incorporated for construction of the municipal court relocation and renovation project.
Mr. Moulton?
Thank you. This ordinance accomplishes two things. First thing that it does is it awards the contract to renovate the existing city hall annex building on Monroe Street into a, the top floor, into a municipal court, and it awards that bid to GBH Builders Incorporated in an amount of $552,143.25. What it also does is it allocates or makes a budget transfer of $80,000, excuse me, from the Fire Station 2 project to this, to this project. Finance committee approved, recommended that transfer because the Fire Station 2 project came significantly underbid. Fire attested that that project could afford that transfer, and so, in order to complete the municipal court renovation, we're making that essentially an allocation from that project to another, but they're both still under sales tax F, capital improvements tax. So, the municipal court project not only converts the top floor of that space from office, office space into a municipal court, it also addresses other areas within that building. Most significantly, it is replacing the entire HVAC system with a more efficient system and with a system that is, that's newer. The current system is at its useful end of life, and so, we're taking this opportunity to give that, give that building an entirely new HVAC system and give it a new lease and, you know, secure long-term use of that building. And then also, it's addressing some significant deferred maintenance on the exterior of the building, painting soffits and fascias and caulking around the base, and so, this is really both an investment in converting that space into a municipal court, which is needed for significant operational reasons, but also securing the investment in that building long-term regardless of whatever uses in there. So, if there are any further questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Councilman Prather?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to suspend the rules that we may have a third reading this evening.
There's been a request for suspension of rules for a third reading, are there any objections to that? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to third read the bill.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with GBH Builders Incorporated for construction of the municipal court relocation and renovation project.
Is there any discussion or questions on the bill? Seeing none, Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. We'll move on to item 13, bills pending, 2018-012. An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 21, nuisances pertaining to administrative costs for nuisance abatements.
Councilman Hensley?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move for the entry of substitute number one for Bill 2018-012. It's already been distributed to the council.
There's a motion to accept the substitute, is there a second?
Second.
Motioned and seconded?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. We now have the substitute on the floor. Mr. Sanders, would you like to offer a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. I knew I was going to get that wrong. This bill is substantially the same as the one that was first read two weeks ago. It increases the administrative fee for abating a property to $250. Staff conducted an analysis of what our costs are for abating on three different scenarios. The average cost is $343. We're merely asking for an administrative fee that would more cover the costs that we actually incur when we have to abate a property. We very rarely, in terms of the numbers of violations we write up, about 2% of them get to the point where they're not complied to by citizens, and abatement is one of the solutions we have at our disposal, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions or discussion? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I would just like to thank Mr. Sanders and staff for spending a considerable amount of time entertaining my questions and explaining several processes to me and explaining to me and others how these sorts of fees are applied and the on-the-ground specifics and realities about this part of the city administration, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. We'll move on to item B, Bill 2018-013.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Section 19-401, motor vehicles and traffic of the code of the city of Jefferson by the modification of portions relating to the 100 block of Madison Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. The ordinance basically changes the time limit from two to four hours in the 100 block of Madison Street. We had a trial period where we made the change to see if it created any parking problems in the downtown, none were found, and we're recommending the official action to change